It's for the grant, sorry.
Sorry.
It's actually to change the sunset date on the grander. We're under construction, but they, we were supposed to be done the 21st, but we, our, our architect was tied up due to the COVID. So we couldn't get their stuff, but as you can see, we're moving forward.
Yeah, we have a few of the COVID issues still in our skin or our items here, so we'll get to more of those. Resolution, item number seven is a resolution, we're sending an older resolution, this is for the fees on the teleport community center. And then we have a pay estimate number one for Tri Valley construction. And that's for the taking down the Hicks house. Construction program, our annual striping contract. They had some non-working days due to wind and weather last week. This week they're starting on the West End. Old Mountain Road, we had other issues that delayed the contractor from starting this week. And so they will start, their plan is to start next week. Roosevelt drainage repair contractor is struggling to get materials, all of his materials. But that's kind of the norm these days. Hopefully as soon as they get those, they'll, they'll start, I'm not sure when that'll be, I don't think they had any ETA on materials.
No.
Um, let's see, grant funded edge line. Let's see, that's on your agenda, grant funded signs and guide posts. Still in the process with that one. Porty Road. Just waiting on a few minor items, our deviation from Wash Dot, still haven't heard back on that yet. We provided them additional information, but we're waiting on them to make a final decision.
What happens if they say no?
There are no other options, I don't know what they would have us do, so in this case it's there, you can leave it as it was. Or you can fix it.
So I would think the fix is way preferable.
Yeah.
It's less of a, is the old is more of a deviation from standard than what we're proposing.
Yeah, and it's just not possible.
Yeah.
You can't approve it because of the archaeological.
Right.
Things that prevent us from doing that, otherwise we might still be there if we could have done that. So. Uh, let's see.
Yes, it's a scary question to ask.
Yeah.
They say no.
I think we're assuming that they will say yes, it just they.
Takes time.
Yeah, they have to have enough paperwork to make them feel comfortable with over there. So, cause basically they're proving it even though I stamped it, so I understand. Let's see, our paving projects, they're on add and bid opening for those should be next week on Tuesday. And we have three bidders, paving, large paving contractors signed up, so we should have good competition and should get good bids. Guardrail repair, so every year we have to repair guardrail that's damaged over the winter. And that'll open next week as well. Maintenance side, we're getting ready for chip sealing, so the east end guys are still crack sealing. And then cleaning under the guardrail on Roosevelt grade road, they get quite of accumulation of sand underneath there throughout the winter. Since that's a heavily used route by those in that area as well as the landfill.
Clean that up under a guardrail.
It's kind of labor intensive.
Yeah.
I'm taking water cannon off a fire truck as you're going by would be the best way, but I would imagine out there with brooms and juggles.
Yeah, they scoop some of it, use the skid steer somewhere they can. But yeah, you're right, it's labor intensive. Some places, some property owners are okay with us just shoving it over some, not so much.
Oh, never thought of that.
Yeah, just give it to the neighbor.
Cheers now. Thank you. We'll be back next year with more. West End crews are patching, so patching still in Glenwood and Trout Lake area. Facility side, I haven't been over to the building for about three weeks, so I'll head over there today, I'm sure they've gotten a lot more done. But.
And we have, we have visitors coming and we should have, I don't, I don't think we asked, we have the WAC president is going to be here. And Eric is, is shepherding him around. And we had offered to give them a tour of the building, they're going to be here about 11:30.
Okay.
And we, and we're gonna have lunch with them, but we, what would work best, is it better to have us go to lunch and then do a little tour after? Understanding we have to be back by one.
Yeah.
Or just do the tour at 11:30, just a quick walkthrough, we have to just rub their nose.
11:30 probably be best.
Okay.
Or at lunchtime, there's, you know, everybody takes a break at lunch.
Right.
So it's less, there's less going on inside the building and outside. So up to you.
11:30 or 12:00, 13:00, your choice.
Yeah. Yeah. I would say, I mean, it's kind of cool to see stuff happening, but that would be my preference, but.
Sure.
But it is, we have to kind of work around people, but yeah, let's just do it first thing. Let's haul them over there.
Okay.
And then after late, oh well, we'll go without them.
You missed it.
You missed her on that one, yeah.
How many?
So there's two.
Two of them, okay, I'll bring the hard hats and this.
Okay.
And you guys all still have?
In my office, I believe.
Okay. Okay. Um, the one big thing that is going to happen this week, I know for sure Friday, they're gonna grind the north lane on Court Street. And our crews are gonna actually take that material, the grindings, and we'll use those, I think it's out at S D.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we'll put them on the road later, but right now we'll store them out there.
Yeah. We'll store them on the road.
Yes, they'll be eventually stored on the road. Yeah, eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not, not next week.
No, not next week.
Yeah. But stored on the road, I like that. We're just storing it.
All right. Courthouse entry, I'll let Jeff tell you what.
As you can hear, and I told them, you know, let's calm down a little bit, let's not get too carried away. We did, oh, we did take away, like I told you last week, we were gonna take out the North Rowan, we did. And we talked to everybody, so they're gonna continue on that. And they'll start backfilling, basically what happened is they ran out of work because I wasn't gonna say it's okay for you to backfill, it's green concrete.
Right.
So they're waiting for their concrete wall and everything to cure, and then they get backfilled, then they'll start pouring the steps back up. Do they, they, you didn't do cylinders on?
Yes, we did.
Oh, you did, wow.
Oh, yeah. The structural.
This government work.
Yeah, the structural stuff, we definitely, we won't do the flatwork stuff because it's not as big a thing, but the structural stuff, oh yeah.
Okay.
Yes, the first break was 4,200, I think the second was 3,500. I mean, the different, all the retaining walls, we did breaks, so.
Okay, cool.
All right. Indoor arena, we, I don't know if you talked about this.
Yeah, we replaced the covers, we're finishing those off this week.
And then the Pioneer Center, we actually are starting this month, we'll start painting the west side of the building. So we're kind of doing that, we did some last year and now paint another side this year and we'll keep working our way around. The other thing they're doing is the startling is just tear that, all the bed blocks up over there. And I don't know if you've heard, over the years, the complaints from health, they, the birds seem to migrate over there. When they get in and then they get stuck up there and they die, and sometimes they fall through the, the ceiling. Or they, you know, we find them.
Yeah.
And so anyway, we're trying to prevent that, but they're destructive birds. So it's a challenge, it's been a challenge. Radio sites.
Yeah, we're, part of the reason we're painting now also is we have to rent a lift for the radio site to make the transfer. So we're gonna use that same lift to paint, cause you rent it for three weeks, the fourth week is basically free anyway, so we'll keep it the whole month. And we're doing that move, like I told you on the night, I haven't heard back from Sade, I'm gonna start chasing that guy around again to see where we are with negotiations on Sade. And as far as follow-ups, I gave you the three, we just went out and kind of looked at what people are doing. And then we came up with just three options, if somebody has a different one or like to choose or to replace, you know, what we have on ours, which now say masks are required. One that explains the employees is kind of nice, little bit more reading, I don't know if people get that far.
That's my truth.
Yeah, actually, I kind of like that, too. That's the most information. Again, I can't, we're just putting it on the door.
At least demand.
Yeah, at the least demand, right, more explanation than a.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll swap that one for this one.
That's it for us.
Three weeks and that's it?
Yeah, I'm trying to catch up, yeah.
So you don't.
Yeah. We covered everything when he was gone, so.
Everything's all fixed, done, no worries.
Anything else?
I was gonna say that's the shortest briefing for you guys ever.
It is, that's pretty short, yeah.
Well, before you got back, he was bringing in cupcakes for us. We got no breakfast, we got no briefing, we did it. We did it all.
I don't know if I have the hard hat.
Did you pawn another one?
Huh?
Did you pawn another one?
I thought I gave it back to him right then and there.
I would go with that, that's, that's a plausible explanation. Yeah, better check and make sure I didn't do that, too. Cause I've been over there since a couple times, so.
You're fascinated by that building.
Well, it's, that's my field, that's, I love that stuff, so. I'm always interested, cause it's a little, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger. It's, you know, it's a order of magnitude bigger than I ever built, I'm always kind of curious what the, the techniques of the tradespeople is, how they're.
Yeah.
How it's different.
It is different.
It is different.
Since we have like extra time on your agenda and we're done talking, and I mentioned it to Gordy, that, that it's been brought up to me by people in the city. That they would like to see some murals on some of the walls. And my thinking about it was, I hate to give somebody a wall and say, you know, because if you don't like it, you're kind of stuck with it. I, I like the idea of, no, paint me a picture, then I go, yeah, I like that, put that on there. Approach of whether, you know, our county, whether it's wheat fields and a swath or out there going through a wheat field on one wall. A waterfall in Trout Lake on a different wall, and you know, just thinking outside the box versus plain boring walls and like that main lobby or.
I was wondering if you're talking outside or inside.
Oh, no, not on the outside, no.
I'm thinking the downs, there's murals everywhere.
No, 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 no.
But for what we.
Also, I wanted to throw that out there, because I think if it's something that we were interested in doing, it would be way easier to do before we moved in.
And one of the things we, we kind of have kicked around, the same idea is that maybe we approach it like it's a contest and people have to actually submit. And there is some, you know, either there is or there isn't some kind of financial prize, and then they get to, whether it's painted on a canvas or they painted on the wall, something.
As long as they get to see it first.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you see what they're gonna do, and then they act, you select somebody from that, or more than with somebodies, I don't know.
We had a conversation last week about the public health building over there and tearing that down, turning it into a parking lot. Somebody called in during open public comment, was that part of our requirement that we tear it down and turn it into a parking lot?
It is part of our parking plan, so our, a lot of our county vehicles and kind of overflow parking, that's part of it, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was a requirement or, or it was just kind of our plan.
There is, the city came back with, at first it wasn't a requirement, I think it was like 325 spots. And so we're around 300, but the, our actual zoning requirement is, since we're in the central business district, it's zero. But I, we're not doing zero, so we tried to get close to that number. And we, so we looked at all of our available property that didn't have a house or a business or something on it. And that's, we ended up buying the one house and two vacant lots, one was already a parking lot, and then the other was just a vacant lot. And then the, the plan was our overflow would be annex one. And with the possibility, because we do have a need for almost, for seniors, almost like a place where they can clean. You know, do we put a, a, some kind of a garage there that allows us to get a lot of our equipment, gas powered equipment out of the basement?
Here they covered storage.
Right. Yeah, so it's. We need more space, but you know, that, and that seemed to be the most economical, because of the cost, because when we originally started, the cost to do anything with annex one was expensive. I mean, it's been, had a lot of ma- deferred maintenance.
That would bring up my question, if, if somebody asked me, what's the cost to bring that building up to where you can feel comfortable? Let's say, just while Eric running a childcare out of it, what's the cost?
I think we had just initially, this kind of drove us to look at and, and do a feasibility study, you know, does it make sense to stay there or not? And we were, you know, we got the roof, the HVAC units, that's all single payment, all that, so the cost was about a, or two and a half million, just to do.
I was thinking it was like 2.9.
Yeah, just, then you still have the old building, it's, you get no improvements or no ADA functionality, I mean, that's just, it's an old building. We can, it's expensive and you don't really gain anything.
It would cost you about as much to fix the old building as it would the building we went.
Yeah, and I think when we looked at making those other improvements to annex one, where it would be more functional. And you could actually, not just the outside and the deferred maintenance items, but to make it usable, remodel it, it was about 6.9 million somewhere in there. So it, it's expensive.
Hence.
Hence, yeah, that's how we got here.
Right, yeah. But I think the question was raised about, is it a requirement? Not that we would necessarily update and do anything, but if we didn't need it for parking. And we just surplus to as a building and somebody else took it. Is that even an option that would be on the table at this point, my understanding was, well, I think we need the park, and that was part of.
It would, it would be a struggle, I think, to get all the vehicles and all the people here, especially at times when there's jury, jury's kind of our maximum.
Yes, we've seen.
Yes.
So.
So what do you guys think about the mural thing, that backtrack, and I just don't want to take it too long. If it's something we want to do, I think it's something we should start planning and getting around before it's too late to do it, so. More to think about it, we'll.
No, I mean, we have one in the Pioneer Center, there's one on, on one wall, I think something tasteful.
Tasteful.
That reflects the community, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Then it gives some, some ownership of the building.
What is the one of the Pioneer Center?
It's of a, like a mountain man in a, I guess so.
Pioneer scene.
Pioneer, yeah, like a pioneer, yeah, it's the Pioneer Center, so it's like the, the mascot, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a setting on one, when you come in the main entrance up on the side wall, that you can see from either floor.
I'd be interested to see what people come up with.
Come up with, yeah.
Community outreach.
Yeah.
I like that idea. Worst case scenario, 10 people submit things and we go, um, yeah, we went in a different direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah. A big clock. All right. That's what we ended up with.
Yeah.
This was the winner.
Decided to go with Hank Show White.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, we can start putting some ideas together.
Together of how we would do the, you know, are there, you know, it should be open to anybody in the, in the old.
I just made new county, or what if somebody from the Dallas was interested? I don't carry the weight, so I'm just bringing this.
Well, I mean, if it's supposed to be. I, I mean, I mean, I guess is it the, is it the piece of art when it's done that we're concerned about? It being the scene is something that's about the county versus the people actually doing it, I guess, so. I guess I'm more concerned about the scene.
Right.
Not necessarily who did it. It would be nice if it was a.
Yeah.
I would agree, maybe we could bonus point, too. Open it up for everybody and we want to know where their address is.
Okay, their community. A little too much information to be now that we're live.
Okay.
So, okay. Challenge will be what's tasteful and what's not, that's a.
I had the bowler, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Anything else? Nope.
Welcome back.
All right, thank you. See you again at 11:30.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Catching up.
Right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, sir.
No, I would say only, no. Thank you. I don't know, we're figuring it out.
Five weeks already?
I know.
Hey.
I know, so there's, there's a few of them, it seems like, yeah, weren't you here last week?
I know, maybe for something else.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I was. Another regular board update. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start out this morning with the consent agenda, Ben made aware, I have one item on your consent agenda. And there was a miscommunications about the total cost of that.
Yeah, just a slight difference.
Yeah. Just an order of magnitude.
I was super happy when I read the original one.
Spoken deal.
Don't set expectations. We're gonna get more than one radio out of that, but.
Well, no, it said 13 radios. $2,495.
No way. Yes, so.
It seems too good to be true, it probably is.
Tell me it's grant money.
Yes, the good news is, it's a, it is state homeland security money will be reimbursed for in total, radios and programming and so on.
I'm much happier.
Where are the 13 radios going to?
Trout Lake Fire District one. Yes, they've been struggling for quite some time, and come to me over the last three years. And they, it started out as a conversation about how they use our radio system. And the use of the operations channels for working channels and being able to scan so they can get back to dispatch and so on and so forth.
I figured the fire district would have to pay for their own. Or get a community lock grant or something, I, this is, this is interesting.
Yeah, it's with the emergency management program grants, or therefore if there's specific needs.
What do you do with the old radios, save either from them or, you know, the jail, change theirs out, whatever, there's all golf for the option.
And that's what this was originally, this, this grant was originally written for is for the jails, excuse me, the corrections officers and the reserve deputies to get new portables. The sheriff found another source of funding, so then I went to the fire district one and said, hey, there's a, there's a possibility here, and they were like, yeah. But we don't take possession of their radios, that's in their inventory, so they will surplus those or whatever they choose to do. And this isn't enough to, to fully equip all their folks.
Yeah, say 13 doesn't include everybody out there.
No, we usually just have two or three in a vehicle and.
But, um, for their emergency medical service response, so their EMTs, they, you know, often will respond, BOP personally, known vehicles. So then they have their own portables and that sort of thing. But, yeah, we, as the grant agency, it's, we assign them to the fire district, so they sign off. But it stays in our inventory and we have to track it through the grant management program, because it's a FEMA grant that's passed through the state, so. But yeah, the good news is that there's no county dollars being spent there, it'll all be reimbursed.
So what happens if one of them gets lost then?
They just report that to us, every two years we have to do an inventory report.
Okay.
Checking in with them, same as we do with any other agency we've, uh, given equipment to, to use. And then we report that to, well, we document that and, and when we do, reporting to the state. And that, that's reflected in that report.
Yeah, pretty much everything you'll get used to, I'll be asking, is this grant money, or is this county money?
Well, as, um, I don't know, there's a huge percentage of my department that is granted, both on the emergency management side and the nine on one side, so. Yep. Therefore, it was first on my list to talk to you, because I thought there might be some questions. Anything else? Okay, dive right into the public safety radio system, at this time it is functioning normally. Had some issues throughout the last, since the last time I was here. List them individually, nothing major, no, uh, system issues that affected users except for one of the users, well, probably more than one, but one specifically that had an open microphone for quite some time. And was traveling along Highway 14 and then up Highway 97 until I was able to get through to them. And they figured out it was that, that, that's a difficult thing to deal with, and it was on the law channel. So we dispatched, switched the law users over to county ops until we could get it cleared up. It was one of the longest we've ever had, that's problematic, so. And we still don't know who it is.
I was guilty of that for two minutes once, so I, I feel their pain.
Yeah. Nobody's admitted to it yet. On the maintenance side, the facilities preventative maintenance contractor is gonna start their visits probably next week, maybe the third week of June. All the snow seems to be retreating quickly, so they can get to all of our sites. I, is the process of figuring out when to schedule that, I look at the cameras at Flat Top, because that's the last site we can get into due to snow. And that security fence is significantly damaged this year. I know I've reported that before, but as the snow went away, because I could only see half of it last time I was here. Now, it's all visible, and I've asked that contractor to look at that and give me his recommendations. Document it, photograph it, and send me a report, so we'll see what comes of that. We'll be looking into options for the repair of that fence in such a way that we might not have this happening all the time.
Yeah, because we're, you know, we're spending quite a bit every year on repairs, and it's like, there should be, there should be some solution.
And we skipped last year because it wasn't, it wasn't bad enough, it, I thought it was a serious security risk, but.
How many feet of fencing are we talking here?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
20 by 20 space or?
No. It's probably more like 40 by 40. So I'll be working on that and, and like. So I'll be working on that and, and like I said, more permanent solutions, like we talked about last year in our discussions, different type of fencing. That isn't susceptible to that snow load and being run over by snowmobiles, so. The sustainable funding recommendations project is on hold, just due to the lack of my staff. Time to be able to get to that with my current staff situation. Radio site lease agreements, been doing a lot of work on those recently. The Gogotha site sublease agreement with Benton County finally came through. It is a significantly different agreement than it has been in the past, that's all. Because Benton County has not followed up in past years and evidently the landowner, the prime land lease has been changed and the landowner is demanding a share of the subleases. So we were going from paying nothing a year to paying $11,567.71 per year going forward. And, and that would go up, yes, but there's no, no choice there unless we wanted to go into a lease, land lease agreement with the property owner, build their own site from scratch, which is multi-million dollar, most likely, or at least just over a million, I would say. So that's just an update come budget season. And that'll have to be added to our budget for the radio system cost. The Juniper Point Site and Land Lease with NSC Smelter LLC is also up for renewal by June 30th. Been going back and forth for months with the landowners representatives and finally made some headway, made direct contact with the principal for that company. And last Thursday, I believe it was, Wednesday or Thursday, had a good conversation. So we're on a much better path up until the point, which is going to be news to all of you, that we might just do an extension of the current lease. They have considerations that they need to, for the projects that they're considering on their property there. The old aluminum site down below and the hill up above, couple things in the pipeline for them, and they want to have the maximum amount of flexibility going forward. That's why we're going to try and enter into like a two-year lease until those projects can be determined by them. But Scott Tallman was great to talk to and once we got one on one with each other, it, it was much better. So I'm happy with where we are now. The Indian Hill Site Sublease with Hitterman County and Sheriff's Office, 911 Dispatch, they're part of their public safety radio system now. And they've experienced some problems getting their system up and running, so we've had a delay in getting exactly what they have put into our site and so that we can charge them appropriately. So that's been a little delay, but we got that information to our, our tier three maintenance provider last week, finally, after months of waiting. And so we should be able to move forward with that sublease agreement with Hitterman County sooner rather than later. On a public safety radio project, a quick outside upgrade, a cut over from the current equipment location to the new radio room is scheduled for next Wednesday night. I am still in the process of determining, being able to develop a radio system user's operational plan so that we avoid any downtime during that.
Yeah, how, how long do you think it will be?
Is the. 911 call comes in, we've got to be able to dispatch, page into the fire EMS and communicate with them on a dispatch channel. There are no options because that site is, or that location is not served by any other other sites to any degree that you can count on. There is spotty coverage in a mobile application with a hundred watt radio.
So, but what is the plan? I mean, because you, how do you literally switch one to the other? There's.
So the, the radio technicians and engineers have worked together. I've been brought in it here at the last minute to determine exactly how it works in our system, you know, how we use our system. But we will move equipment one or two channels at a time. So we, we will move users from their normal dispatch and page channels over to an alternate.
Okay.
And then move those and then move them back about three rotations.
Okay.
So it'll, hopefully it's not a busy day in dispatch.
Right.
But it, it will become one because of all the moving of responders on the radio system, yes. And to accomplish that, we've pre-built the new radio room with the equipment that's needed, using some of our spares, purchasing new battery banks for power, because all of our equipment runs off 48 volt DC, not off of your aid directly. So, and anything that isn't spares that is in the current location, that we don't need a new one, and it's still in, you know, good working order and not aging out, we will use that safe as pass. That gives us even more flexibility to be able to make those moves and not have to expand a bunch of money on extra equipment to pre-build a new space. Working out to our advantage to have safe as pass still in the development stage for this purpose. Any questions about that? 911 call taken, public safety radio dispatching. I was not able to put together a call audio report for you, I'm sorry. Just didn't, it's okay, I understand.
We understand, totally understand, don't miss it. You were needed elsewhere.
Yes, sir. Staffing, we've had the, actually, I'll strike that. The first bullet is not one casual position, that it should be one full-time position, but my mistake. And we've had that position out to advertising for just over a month now and I've only received three applications. So it, early last week, I instructed my staff to advertise again more broadly. We're trying to get it into some of the trade websites and social media and all those kinds of things. Because we're just, don't have a deep enough pool for it.
That could be somebody is thinking about relocating.
Yeah.
They're already in the, in the business and, oh, look, there's, you know, I could have to click it back.
It's happened before.
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
They had a particularly bad day at work and they say, hey, look, I'm.
Right, exactly.
I need healthcare. I need healthcare.
There you go. I want to live someplace that isn't rioting.
I, exactly, dispatching, that I'm not, yeah.
But because of the time that it takes to vet the applications and go through the interview process and all that, and choosing to hold off until we get a deeper pool and maybe some, some more relevant qualifications out of those people. Because right now we have nobody with, with relevant experience or training. And then we still have one casual communications officer in training. And we just released a full-time doms officer from training, doing very well, very happy with that. If you're not aware, it's for the sheriff to report, but if you're not aware, we had a significant incident, I'll say, in the county over the weekend with a pursuit and standoff, shots fired and all. And our newest communications officer and our, how do I say this without being politically correct? Our longest standing, most senior dispatcher, we're both on duty at the time. And the newest dispatcher called out the pursuit and according to my senior dispatcher, did a wonderful job. Happy about that and had no doubts, very confident in her abilities. And we're going to do our best to get the two of them into the debriefing for that incident that I've heard the sheriff is conducting. Try to schedule around that when we have the time and location.